I was glad when they said unto me,[104.48][104.88]"Come, let us worship in the house of the Lord together, to behold His beauty, to witness His glory, in this place, the house He has built for us, a place of His power, a place of His presence, a place where we can let go of our fears, and take hold of faith, a place where we can gather together as one, hearts united in praise and worship for Jesus and for all the wondrous things He has done." No calamity, no sickness, no death can bring us down; for we are standing on solid rock, we are standing on Jesus. We have brought His word and His power into our homes and into our families, but we are not meant to be separated and isolated for long; for it is not alone, but together, with His family, with His church, that we will arise. Now is the time to celebrate our victory, to celebrate His name together, in this house; for this is our house of worship, this is our house of miracles. Hello everybody, welcome to Link Up. Again, we're here to just experience the goodness of the Lord, His presence, and as we worship, let the presence of God touch your hearts and let Him just continue to speak to you. And even as we worship, we would like to invite everybody to just send your prayer request if you have any prayer concern. The online engager is, you know, with you and with us so that we can pray for your prayer concern. So, all together now, let's prepare our hearts, let's just worship the Lord. Oh Dios, sa pagsubo, ikaw ang katunad. Oh Dios, sa iyong presensya, walang kalungkutan. Ako'y tinubos ng iyong pagibigayat. Habang buhay kitang pupurihin, ikaw ay dakila. Wala kang katulad, ikaw ay dakila. Itaas ang alan mo, ikaw ay dakila. Wala kang katulad, ikaw ay dakila. Itaas ang alan mo. Itaas ang alan mo, Hesus. Ang iyong pagmamahal, ang tumubo sa akin. Ang iyong katapatan, ang nagligtas sa akin. Ang iyong pagmamahal, ang tumubo sa akin. Ang iyong katapatan, ang nagligtas sa akin. Ang iyong pagmamahal, ang tumubo sa akin. Ang iyong katapatan, ang nagligtas sa akin. Ang iyong pagmamahal, ang tumubo sa akin. Ang iyong katapatan, ang nagligtas sa akin. Ang iyong pagmamahal, ang tumubo sa akin. Ang iyong katapatan, ang nagligtas sa akin. Ang iyong pagmamahal, ang tumubo sa akin. Ang iyong katapatan, ang nagligtas sa akin. Ikaw ay dakila, wala kang katulad. Ikaw ay dakila, itaas ang alan mo. Ikaw ay dakila, wala kang katulad. Ikaw ay dakila, itaas ang alan mo. Dakila ka, Hesus, nakila ka, Hesus. Ang iyong pagmamahal, ang tumubo sa akin. Ang iyong katapatan, ang nagligtas sa akin. Ang iyong pagmamahal, ang tumubo sa akin. Ang iyong katapatan, ang nagligtas sa akin. Ang iyong pagmamahal, ang tumubo sa akin. Ang iyong katapatan, ang nagligtas sa akin. Ang iyong pagmamahal, ang tumubo sa akin. Ang iyong katapatan, ang nagligtas sa akin. Ikaw ay dakila, wala kang katulad. Ikaw ay dakila, itaas ang alan mo. Ikaw ay dakila, wala kang katulad. Ikaw ay dakila, itaas ang alan mo. Ikaw ay dakila, wala kang katulad. Ikaw ay dakila, itaas ang alan mo. Ikaw ay dakila, wala kang katulad. Ikaw ay dakila, itaas ang alan mo.
Heavenly Father, as we come to Your presence, we recognize and we honor You that You are great and Your power towards us is so great working, Father, in every life. In every life that is joining right now, Lord God, as we link up, as we pray to You, as we come to Your presence with this faith in our hearts that You are great, O God. Napaka-dakila ng iyong kapangyarihan, napaka-dakila ng iyong pagmamahal na nagligtas sa amin at nagpalaya sa amin. Father, Your power that is at work when You raised up Your Son Jesus from the dead is the same power that is at work in us, that saved us and always saving us from all troubles that we have. So dear brothers and dear sisters, we just want to exhort you in the light of the greatness of our God from Matthew chapter 6. And I just would like to read this and exhort you as we pray together for any prayers that we have in our hearts. So in verse 31 of Matthew chapter 6 from the Amplified Classic Version, it says here, "Therefore, do not worry and be anxious," saying, "What are we going to have to eat? Or what are we going to have to drink? Or what are we going to have to wear? For the Gentiles, the heathen, wish for and crave and diligently seek all these things; and your heavenly Father knows well that you need them all. But seek, aim, at, and strive after, first of all, His kingdom and His righteousness, His way of doing and being right; and then, all these things, the clothes you wear, the food you eat, and the things that you need, all these things taken together will be given you besides. So, do not worry; or be anxious about tomorrow, for tomorrow will have worries and anxieties of its own. Sufficient for each day is its own trouble." So let's come into the presence of the Lord. We invite you, all of us here, and really together, let us come together in His presence knowing that God is for us and He is great and He is all-powerful and yet He loves us. So let's continue to come, let's continue to pray. Heavenly Father, thank You for the assurance of Your word and of Your presence that You are with us, that You never leave, You never forsake us. And Lord, thank You that You are so aware of the very need that we have right now. So Father, we are praying for each father in the house who are linking with us right now, linking up with us right now in prayer. Lord, we are praying for the fathers of the house. God, Your continuous grace and wisdom, courage and strength for every father in the house that in the name of Jesus, let there be fresh perspective of the decisions that they are about to make pertaining to their own lives, pertaining to their marriage and pertaining to their children. God, we are believing, Lord God, even for the channels of blessing, of financial help, or blessings for the food that they need for the day, Lord God, and every single day. Even the need for protection, the need for a house, a dwelling place to stay with the family. God, we are believing with our brother, Lord God, believing for His family as a father. And even Jesus, if there's a dad that is praying with us and believing for the healing of His child, in the name of Jesus, we are in full agreement in the light of Your greatness and of Your power that is at work right here, right now in our midst, we access Your healing anointings, Lord God, to flow to that son, to flow to that daughter, in the name of Jesus. Heavenly Father, let our dear brother as a dad be free from worry and anxiety knowing as he is listening right now, as you are listening to us right now, let your worries, let your anxiety be put to rest as you surrender all that care to the Lord. So we speak peace over you fathers, we speak courage over you and wisdom over you. Blessing and blessing to you in the name of Jesus. Hallelujah, God.
Thank you, Lord, glory to God. Let's just sing that song in the chorus again, Ikaw Ay Dakila, just declaring the greatness of the Lord, the power of God in this place. All of you who are connected right now, just agree with us that the power of God just flow, whatever things that you are believing, healing, provision, financial breakthrough, you just have to believe that, receive that as we sing this song, the chorus. Come on, let's sing it. Ikaw ay dakila, wala kang katulad. Ikaw ay dakila, itaas ang alan mo. Ikaw ay dakila, wala kang katulad. Ikaw ay dakila, itaas ang alan mo. Ikaw ay dakila, wala kang katulad. Ikaw ay dakila, itaas ang alan mo. Ikaw ay dakila, wala kang katulad. Ikaw ay dakila, itaas ang alan mo. Ikaw ay dakila, wala kang katulad. Ikaw ay dakila, itaas ang alan mo. Ikaw ay dakila, wala kang katulad. Ikaw ay dakila, itaas ang alan mo. Hallelujah. You know, this is really our declaration. And you know, Cyrus, it's something that we need to continue to declare even into our lives personally, and you're a father, but at the same time to your family also, you know? So how do you, you know, flow with that greatness of God in your family, over your, you know, your daughter, right?
Yes, well, the verse that been asan ni Pastor Milet, I think it's very relevant, especially in the times and the seasons that we are going through with all of the uncertainties, you know? You know, what am I gonna feed my family? Whether it's like literal food or even like spiritual and all of these things. And the thing is, I'm reminded and I'm comforted that, you know, as we continue to lift up the name of Jesus, you know, it says there that He is great and He is greatly to be praised. And in spite of what may be happening around me personally, you know, what is going through in my life, but I can put my faith and I can put my trust in the One who is able to do exceedingly, abundantly, far above all I can ask or think or imagine, so that says that inefficiency. So that gives me great comfort that even though I might be worried, but I can put my faith in the One who is never gonna fail me.
Amen, indeed, you know? So can you just pray and just, you know, let's just pray for those people right now who are somehow in the state of worry, anxiety, with all the things that are happening right now, you know, the economy, the gasoline and all the things that are, you know, shooting up with prices and sometimes it brings you to place of anxiety. So let's just pray for them, you know? Let's just declare peace abundant.
Father, we thank You that You are Jehovah Jireh, the God who provides. So I pray right now, I speak Your provision to flow according to your children, according to your riches in glory. I pray for every provider that is watching us right now, every father, every mother that is working, that is, you know, trying to provide for their family. I pray that they would recognize that the source of their income is not their job, but You are the One opening up channels of blessings, channels of streams of income to flow, that they will not be in fear, that they will not be in worry as prices go up. We know that You are indeed the ultimate source, the ultimate provider, that we can put our faith and we can put our trust in You and as we continue to do what You have called us to do. Of course, we will still do our jobs, yes, but we know and we realize that we can put our faith, we can put our trust. So even right now, I pray for strength, I pray for comfort, I pray for wisdom, I pray for just peace that surpasses all understanding, that whenever we look at the news, we would continue to hold on to the truth of Your word, that indeed, that You have provided everything for us. It says that You came to give us life and life to the full, that we will never go in hunger, we will not lack. And I speak that over everyone in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's have that. Itaas ang alan mo. Let's have that, let's pick it up. Itaas ang alan mo. Itaas natin ang pangalan ng Panginoon. Let's exalt His name, His greatness, His powers. Itaas ang alan mo. Itaas ang alan mo. In the midst of your need, in the midst of every, any situation that you're in, let's continue to exalt His name. Itaas natin ang pangalan ng ating Panginoon. Itaas ang alan mo, Hesus. Itaas ang alan mo, Hesus. Itaas ang alan mo, Hesus. Itaas ang... Let's pick it up. Itaas ang alan mo, Hesus. Itaas ang alan mo, Hesus. Itaas ang alan mo. Yes, yes. Pangalan mo yan. Itaas ang alan mo. Pangarikan sa Panginoon. Sabahin mo ang pangalan ng Panginoon, Hesus. Itaas ang alan mo, Hesus. Itaas ang alan mo. Come on, Nani. Come on, Nani, Jenny. Let's exalt the name of Jesus. Itaas ang alan mo, Hesus. Itaas ang alan mo, Hesus. Itaas ang alan mo, Hesus. Hesus ang aking tagapagligtas. Ikaw ang aking tagapagligtas. Sa mga panahon ako'y nahihirapan, ikaw ay lumalapit, ikaw ay lumalapit sa akin. Ikaw ay lumalapit sa akin.
Hallelujah. Praise God. Alam niyo itong awiting ito? This song is composed by New Life Music. As you all know, dito po sa Link Up, we are featuring original songs of New Life Music, the album To the Other Side. And in this particular song, Ikaw Ay Dakila, is a composition, isang declarasyon ng kadakilaan ng Panginoon. So Jenny, ano ba ang naging dahilan bakit itong song na ito, Ikaw Ay Dakila? Ano ang naging background nitong song nito sa New Life Music? At paano ito na i... Oh, Jenny ba o si Adi? Ano ba ang naging background ng song na ito?
Actually Pastor, it was Ate Elaine and Ate MJ Malubay who actually composed the song. But for me, if sa akin man nanggaling 'yung song na ito, Ikaw Ay Dakila, I may not have experienced, you know, growing up, having a biological father, but the moment that I came to encounter God, He first introduced Himself to me as my father. And I am reminded with the verse that, "Cast your cares to Him, for He cares for you." And that's what I have experienced personally, you know, encountering God as my father, that whatever situation I may be facing, maybe lack financially, or maybe sickness in the family, death in the family, or even confusion, or even, you know, bad things happening in your life, there are times wherein you are so overwhelmed with what's happening, all that you can ever say is, "God, You are greater than this. Ikaw ay dakila, Panginoon. Mahirap man 'yung pinagdadaanan ko, may namatay man sa aking pamilya, kami man ay naghihirap. Lord, ikaw ay dakila." And whenever I say, and whenever I decree and declare that God is great, miraculously, financial breakthrough will come in. Miraculously, you know, healing in the family will manifest. And so that what's... Yun 'yung nangyayari. Whenever we declare, "God is great", breakthrough happens and we see change in the family.
Yan, so 'yan ang dahilan kung bakit this song is really just releasing that anointing of breakthrough dahil dakila ang Panginoon. Si Jenny, kapagka ina-awit mo ito, kasama ka sa song na ito, talagang nararamdaman namin 'yung kapangyarihan ng awit na ito. So Jenny, can you share how this song, you know, declares?
How the song spoke to me? So, yun nga, when you say, kasi para sa akin, pag sinabi mong ikaw ay dakila, that's the ultimate, that's it, kumbaga. And with all the things that happened in the past and still happening right now, I mean, we cannot stop these things to happen, but the ultimate one, the great one is with us. So I will always remember how faithful He is, kung gaano siya katapat sa atin. So kanina nga, nung binabasa ni Pastor ayun verse, alabasan, alabasan din pumapasok to. "Why should you worry? I got you, I got you." Sabi niyang ano? So why should I worry? He got you, He got you. Say, "Why should you worry? I got you." Sabi niya, "I got you." Yes. "Why should you worry? I got you, I got you." We say, "Why should you worry? I got you, I got you." "Why should you worry? I got you, I got you." "Why should you worry? I got you, I got you." "Why should you worry? I got you, I got you." So I can easily say, "Why should I worry? He got me, He healed me." "Why should I worry? He's provided for me." "Why should I worry? I got this everlasting peace." "Why should I worry? He got me, He got me."
Amen, that is actually a powerful declaration, Jenny. And you know, to all of you who are watching right now, any worry, anxiousness, burden that you are carrying right now, the Lord is reminding you with the flow of that song, you know? He got you. He will always be with you, He will never leave you nor forsake you. Just declare His greatness, His goodness and His faithfulness. Amen? Come on, let's just lift up our hands continually and let's just worship Him. You have anything else?
Hallelujah. Thank you, let's worship Him, let's worship, let's take this time. Hallelujah. Let's worship him, let's worship, let's take this time.
We will not worry, God. Peace, the peace of the Lord, the peace of the Lord, the peace of the Lord flowing, the peace of the Lord flowing, the peace of the Lord flowing from his throne to you. The peace of the Lord flowing from his throne to you. The peace of the Lord flowing, flowing. Flowing right here, right now, towards you, towards you. He's giving you peace, he's giving you peace. He's pouring his love. Oh God, the power of God, the peace of God. Pouring towards you. Pouring towards you. The river of peace through your home, through your heart. The peace of the Lord. The peace of the Lord. We receive the peace of the Lord. We receive the peace of the Lord. You sing this, oh, you sing this, my son, you sing this. Oh, my children, you sing this song, the peace of the Lord. The peace of the Lord is mine. The peace of the Lord is mine. The peace of the Lord is mine.
Praise God, praise God. You know what? While Adi was, you know, telling his testimony, Adi, why not pray for the children? For the children who may have lost, you know, their dad or a loved one or their mom? And just pray for peace and comfort and strength that they will be able to dream again and they gather all the strength that they need by the grace of God. Just pray, Adi, thank you.
Hallelujah. Father, we thank you, Lord God. And we intercede right now for those children who may not have fathers, who may not have grew, knowing their fathers, those who are orphans as well. Father, we intercede for them in that you give them peace, Father. You give them peace in their hearts and in their minds. Even if they don't understand, I thank you that you have the peace that surpasses all understanding and that there will be comfort, Lord God, to even those children who may have felt that they felt that they were abandoned by their family or by their father, those who have hurt in their hearts. God, I pray for healing, I pray for restoration, Father. I pray that you would show yourself strong in their lives as a father. I thank you, Lord God, that you would even connect them to spiritual families who can stand and who will be standing as their spiritual fathers as well. I thank you, Father, that you bring in the peace that they need. You bring them the hope that they need, that they will be able to dream again, that they would be able to dream dreams and have vision for the future, knowing that their future is secured and they are standing in the promises of their good, good Father. And so I speak and I release that right now in Jesus' name.
Amen, amen. Powerful, powerful. Well, it is really awesome to be in the presence of the Lord, the goodness of God and his glory. This is the way we link up to the Father. It is a place where we can be at peace, we can rest. It is not a striving place, it is a place where you can just ask your loving Father, "God, I miss you, I love you, I want to talk to you." And that's where we go to worship. So thank you very much for joining us here in Link Up. And we pray that you will continue to grow and increase and just continue to just receive impartation from the Spirit of God. That's our desire, that you will be changed as we continue to just worship the Lord, pray and agree with you with his power and his glory. Well, God bless you and we'll see you again in our next episode of Link Up.
Wala kang katulad, ikaw ay dakila. Itaas ang alan mo, ikaw ay dakila. Wala kang katulad, ikaw ay dakila. Itaas ang alan mo.
Happening at New Life.
Now's your chance to get in-depth with the Word of God. New Life Training Center is reopening night school this school year 2021 to 2022, every Tuesday evenings, 7:00 to 9:15 PM, beginning this month of September. We are featuring one of our major courses every quarter, Redemption, Righteousness, Principle of Faith and Authority of the Believer. For full details of our night school class offerings, class schedules and enrollment requirements, visit New Life Training Center on Facebook or email us at nltc@newlife.ph. Classes on Authority of the Believer starts this April 5, 2022.
The next Gatekeepers Online Gathering is happening this coming Wednesday, March 30, 7 PM via Zoom. If you're a businessperson or part of the marketplace, make sure to update your planner and get the Zoom meeting ID and other info by visiting the Gatekeepers FB page. See you there. Let's get talking on After-Sunday convo. Send in your questions about this Sunday's message and our pastors and leaders will break it down and answer them for you. See you on ASC, Mondays at 7 PM. If you or someone you know is believing for healing, let's come together and agree in prayer for wholeness in your body. Come and join us online for Healing Room Live, every Tuesday at 7 PM. We also invite you to declare the Word of God through songs and prayer with us in Link Up, every Wednesday at 6 PM. If you want to begin your day with the Word of God, then you'll be in good company in Morning Devo, Thursday to Saturday at 8 AM. You don't have to go through life alone. We are here to help you deal with the stresses of life. Practical, psychological and biblical guidance are available on Mental Health Matters, every Thursday at 7 PM. All these weekly programs are broadcast live on newlife.ph on Facebook and New Life Media PH on YouTube. Did you accept Jesus as your Lord and Savior today? Know that your New Life family is celebrating with you. We can help you better understand your new life in Christ by attending our LINK class, every Monday at 6 PM on Zoom. Welcome to the family. Do your friends and family know that we have four onsite Sunday services yet? Make sure you invite someone to be in the room with us next Sunday. If you are joining us online, please note the schedule of our services, which will be broadcast on newlife.ph on Facebook and New Life Media PH on YouTube. Together, we go higher as a church and together, we continue to make Jesus known. See you online.